Clerk, can you please call the meeting order? A roll call, sorry.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Mahavich.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. We have, uh, to lead us in the pledge is John and Jesse from Chute 455 from Johnsburg. If you want to step up here. Two started off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. At this time, I'll open up for public comment. This is regarding, uh, anything that's not on the agenda. So if it's regarding an item that's, uh, later in the agenda, I would ask that you wait till that item is announced. Uh, at this time, is there anyone for public comment? Ma'am, please step to the podium. State your name and address for public record, please.
Sorry. My name is G.B. Seelak, S-Z-I-L-A-K. I am president of the Chesapeake Hills Homeowners Association. Uh, my husband and I also own a home on Silvery Court, which is a bust west campus in Fox Ridge subdivision, which we run out. So I moved to McHenry when I got married in nineteen eighty-one. I moved into my husband's home, and we've been living in, uh, Chesapeake Hills since, uh, Labor Day two thousand nine. Uh, the reason I'm here tonight is basically to have the city council consider that you've received a lot in tax funding from our residents. We have eight buildings, three units per building. So essentially, we have twenty-four people. We're paying taxes into the city. For those city tax dollars, we get very little in services. Uh, we have police protection. We rarely see a police car in our s- you know, on our streets. Um, we have, you negotiate the, the garbage contracts for us. We don't have leaf pickup. We don't have street, I've never seen a street cleaner on our streets. Now, I have to say, our streets are private. I, it's beyond me why this was ever allowed. Bill Bussie was the mayor at the time. Uh, Chuck Miller was a pillar of our community, and, um, first-hand builders were involved. Why the city allowed for private streets is beyond me. Um, if you've ever been in our, um, our complex, we are basically backward E. There's an, uh, entrance and an exit. And, uh, pizza delivery people are always confused because each of our streets is Chesapeake Drive. So we have a South Street, a Middle Street, and a North Street. Uh, we've encountered situations where, uh, fire trucks, ambulances could not get up our streets. We have very little incline to our street. But you remember last year how incredibly awful it was in terms of ice? We have a lot of elderly people in our complex. Basically, I'm asking you to just consider, at this point, um, at least giving us salt at cost. For the last two incidents, which were anomalies, I agree, our snow contract doesn't even start until November fifteenth. Um, and we had two storms. I was very concerned about the age of our residents, and as you know, a fall with an elderly person can be a death sentence. And our streets were sheets of ice. Um, it's very difficult for us to get plowed very quickly by our private contractor because we're only eight buildings. We're three small streets, and they don't care as much about us. Um, it cost us three hundred dollars each time for the salt alone, and fifteen hundred dollars for labor. That's to plow our three streets, our entrance and our exit, and I asked them to salt everything, um, driveways, sidewalks, and the streets. Normally, we only salt the streets. The homeowners are required to, uh, salt their driveways and sidewalks, but because of the nature of the storm, you know, if you didn't shovel your s- your sidewalk or driveway, it was a sheet of ice the next day. So I'd like you just please to consider all this. But at least salt at cost at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. And I'll talk to staff and Director Strange, and we'll get back to you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment at this time? See none? Moving on to the, oh, oh, Chief.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, a- as council all knows, uh, over the course of the beginning of the summer, we retired our K-9 Duke. Um, we had a brief award ceremony for him towards summer, and he wasn't able to attend, um, due to some behavioral issues. Um, but, uh, we're proud to say that as of last week, we just put our new K-9 into service, and we just wanted to take an opportunity for Officer Conway, who is our new K-9 officer, to introduce his new partner to you, um, because he is more than willing to come in here and, and meet and greet all of you guys here. So this is, this is Officer Conway, and this is his new, his new partner. His name is Yogi. And I'm gonna let Josh just tell a little bit about Yogi, and then we'll, uh, continue on with the rest of the meeting.
So this is K-9 Yogi. Uh, he is a purebred German Shepherd. He was actually born locally, unlike most police dogs. Most police dogs come from overseas, Czech Republic or Germany. Um, rare circumstances, uh, they do find quality candidates, um, that have been bred locally, so that's what happened with this guy. Uh, he is gonna be a year next week, so he is fairly young for, uh, police dog to be going through training. So we just finished our seven-week course, uh, through TOPS out in Gray's Lake, and, uh, we look forward to being on the street for hopefully the next decade.
How'd he do in his coursework?
Good. He was the best in his class.
He's an overachiever.
Nice, nice.
Thank you, Officer Conway.
That's good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Appreciate it.
I like Duke.
Happy you would've been out of here if Duke was in here, I guarantee it.
Duke was crazy.
Uh, next item on the agenda is pulled by Alderman Glad, five F. Uh, authorization to execute draw certificate and site draft relating to revocable letter of credit number one-five-zero-zero-two-six-six-seven-nine-dash-two-oh-one in favor for the account of First Midwest Bank in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Alderman Glad, you wanna start the discussion off on this?
Right. Uh, basically, the first year it'll only be fifty-five. I mean, we're not pulling the whole thing, correct?
Correct, correct.
Right, so it'll be fifty-five thousand per year. Unfortunately, uh, I think when we first created this, we were hoping that, that building would go to condos, and evidently it won't. Uh, however, uh, it's kind of found money in a way because it's, uh, money we planned in the past to capture. And my question is, is where will these proceeds go to? Are they, are they earmarked for anything specific?
Is somebody going to TIF fund?
TIF fund?
TIF fund.
The TIF fund?
TIF fund.
Okay, so, um, is there a reason why it's targeted for the TIF fund?
It was a TIF project, TIF agreement.
Uh-huh.
Um, I think, um, being here in twenty-eleven, um, part of the increment, I think this was to make up for part of the increment. You know, if it were to go condo, would, would it would've been a higher increment than if it were apartments. So I, I'm just recalling the, some of the logic I, I remember at the time. Well, I, and I know the, the biggest thing about, uh, you know, I know we had a lot of discussion about condo versus apartments, but the biggest thing was is losing the parking over there. And I just felt that, uh, with this money coming in, that, that maybe that should've been shuffled to specifics as far as improvements in our parking area, back behind the buildings area, the downtown area. You know, another three hundred and thirty thousand dollars per, and that doesn't mean it can't be used for the TIF anyway. But, uh, that was my only concern. So, this is all I've got. With that, I'll make a motion unless somebody else.
You know what you raised, if I could just have a second. Uh, I think it is, are we gonna do this every year or one time? We're gonna do this every year, right?
Every year for six years. Well, or unless it goes condo.
Right, but so we'll come back to the city council again. So really, shouldn't the number be fifty-five thousand?
Well, I, I think it's three-thirty because the actual letter of credit is three-thirty, but the draw is fifty-five.
The draw, it's a limited draw though of, of fifty-five thousand. That's the authority we're looking for tonight.
Correct.
So, so that would be a motion for fifty-five thousand, not three-thirty.
Okay.
Okay, so if you could just make that motion.
Alderman Glad?
I'll make that motion if the real estate, anything else.
So motion for five F as presented in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. Second? Alderman Mahavich?
Second.
Discussion? See none? Clerk, please call it over.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda was pulled by Alderman Glad for five G, uh, two interconnection agreements with Aqua Illinois to provide temporary water service for McHenry Shores and Eastwood Manor Water Systems for the good of the general public at large. Alderman Glad, would you like to start off discussion?
Yeah. I think it's great that, uh, the city of McHenry has the, uh, facilities to be able to have Eastwood Manor hook into the city, uh, system for emergencies and all that, but, I don't know. Um, the users of the water sewer basically pay for the upkeep, uh, of everything through, you know, from year to year, and, uh, rates are adjusted accordingly. Um, and in the past, we've always had where, uh, when there were hookups for water sewer, then normally it would be one and a half times the rate, and, uh, to charge them only a rate of, uh, even feel of what I pay for, for water rates, uh, in the need. And I understand it's just for emergencies, but, uh, why would we only charge them, uh, considering this water is going outside the city that, um, I guess the question is, is are we recouping, uh, all our expenditures to, um, to basically keep our, our, our infrastructure where it is for water and sewer? And has that been looked at as far as what is the impact, uh, outside the city? I know they're gonna build the additional pipelines, but, uh, I just tend to wonder, is that fair to the residents of the, the water system, uh, the residents in the city? We do have, uh, agreements with others that are outside the city that we provide water that they would pay one and a half times the rate. And even though this is a larger company and it's only a, on an emergency basis, I just felt that, uh, charging them only what the, the basic, uh, city rate is, uh, kinda unfair to our residents, considering we're the ones that, that have the facility and, uh, you know, we, we are the suppliers. So, I just threw that out for, for conversation, just to see what everybody felt, uh, and we'll do that.
Director Strange, do you have any comments to add?
Uh, well, I guess as far as, um, wear and tear on our system or impact on our system, we did take a, a brief look at the overall demand from Eastwood Manor, and, uh, the number of homes and the, the demand overall that would add to our system is fairly small in comparison to our overall daily demand. And if you're talking about times of emergency, um, the, again, we have the Eastwood Manor and the McHenry Shores Agreement. Eastwood Manor Agreement, um, or sorry, the Shores Agreement is actually for city residents in Eastwood Manor. Uh, low demand and only, use only in times of emergency. So as far as the fruition of our infrastructure that, that warranted an upcharge, wasn't, wasn't something we considered?
Again, just, you know, I have no problems with, uh, the Shores because, uh, you'd say that's to give the service to our residents, but then Eastwood Manor is outside the city, and, uh, to me, I just feel that, that rate should be a little higher. And if it isn't one and a half times, what, what is the percentage that we'd wanna charge? Or is there any additions that, that council might feel that, uh, would be appropriate? I'm just throwing that out for discussion.
Alderman Schaefer?
Is the, um, how many times has the connection with McHenry Shores been utilized? Do you know?
Very seldom. I, I, um, I was hoping to have our, uh, water superintendent here, but he was, wasn't available today. Um, I did dig a little bit into the histories as far as I can, was able to research. They had a serious water main break of one of their larger mains, uh, that they required, uh, uh, shut down, and they, uh, they utilized our interconnection. And then, I, I don't know for certain if they used it when they repainted their tower, or worked on their tower. I don't, I don't believe they did because I don't think they, uh, required the shutdown. But, um, we do have staff here from, from Aqua who could make any clarifications, but it's seldom, very seldom.
And is that connection, uh, uh, only available to us in Aqua? Or how do you get to it? Meaning the, when the service would be utilized, is that, does it go through you or does they just tie into it and, like, flip a switch and it's going?
They would need to notify us, but they're both, they're, they're both metered. Um, and I can actually, uh, right now, the interconnection for the Shores is, um, the meter's missing, so they, they need to put the meter. So even utilize the Shores connection, the meter needs to be put back in place.
Is that both for, uh, uh, just when it's outgoing water from our system, it's not being metered for any sewer?
No, no, there's no sewer. And we have, we have no intentions of accepting from their, their system.
And where would the Eastwood Manor, uh, hookup be?
There's a location display in the attachment. It is...
I got it. Thank you.
To the, uh, couple hundred feet west of Hillside Manor, Southside Road, on, uh, Lincoln. That's all I had for right now.
Any other questions, comments? I mean, Alderman Santi?
If we know, prior to the, prior to the annexation of Shores, do you know if we had this temporary hookup with them, and did we ever have to use it?
I'd have to do a little more follow-up on that.
Does anyone have an answer?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, from what I remember, the discussion was back with Fred Ba, way back when I first became an Alderman. Uh, there were no hookups. Uh, that was done, uh, I think in the mid-nineties. Um, and there was a lot of talk at that time whether or not the city wanted to take over the system or not and have it hooked in. And, uh, the fear of the city at that time was the fact that the pressure that the city had versus the lines that were out there would basically, uh, deteriorate and burst a lot of their, their lines. But, uh, it wasn't until the mid-nineties, I believe, that, uh, that connection came in. Was Shores already part of the city at that time? In the nineties, yeah. Okay. All right, so we don't, we, we have no history of, because I'm trying to match Eastwood Manor, which basically it's outside the city. It's not annexed to us, so it's not part of the city. I'm just trying to understand that if, in fact, we've been able to offer this prior to the McHenry Shores before they got annexed, and if it was ever put into use at temporary discharge. I don't believe it's probably been done more than maybe a very minor number of times, but, uh...
Yeah, very, very seldom.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Just, kinda something you hit on too, but I know going back to, um, when this, uh, when that particular water system was up for sale, they had some significant, uh, issues. So has that been, are, are you aware of those issues in the Eastwood Manor system and, and we're fine with if they were to use it? We have zero liability, correct?
The, well, the agreement is written such that we, we don't have any liability. And as far as their effect on our system, again, um, we are not taking any water from them. So as far as any attributes or qualities that, that the water they produce has, um, we're not taking water from them.
As long as you're aware of their system and, and how it intertwines with us, if there's not gonna be any liability issues, that's the only thing that I think major concern would be, because I know there was major issues with that. That's why the city had wanted nothing to do with purchasing it.
Yeah, only, um, you know, we still, we're not, this, this isn't about that. We're not negotiating or even considering taking on that system. This isn't about that. It's just about an emergency interconnection. And, uh, there's very, there's pretty clear, um, language in the agreement as far as, um, holding us harmless in the case of any sort of qualities of our water system that they may qualify our water, that they may be accepting in an emergency case. So we are, we are protected at that point.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? See none? Looking for a motion for five G as presented. Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Second? Alderman Miller?
I'll second.
Discussion? See none? Clerk, please call it over.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six A. Uh, it's a motion to approve resolution estimating the property tax levy request for two thousand nineteen, collected in two thousand twenty at four million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Director Lynch, do you, uh, go ahead and present this item?
Thank you. City council is being asked to establish the two thousand nineteen property tax levy amount, which remain flat from two thousand eighteen would be four million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Council is also being asked to establish Monday, December sixteenth at seven P.M. as the date and time to conduct the property tax levy public hearing and consideration of the two thousand nineteen property tax levy ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions, comments regarding this item?
Real quick, Carolyn, you, that's enough time for you to get it completed by the end of the year, then? Your deadline of the...
Right.
You've got, okay. That's, I just wanna make sure that.
Alderman?
I just wanna say that, um, I think most everybody up at this, uh, table, uh, should know that number by heart now because, uh, it's been repeated. How many years in a row?
Um, this'll be the eighth.
Eighth? And, uh, I think we commend, uh, this council as well as the past councils, in that we've, uh, tried to stay as, uh, flat as we can, uh, with this levy and that, uh, again, uh, Senator, we've got a little bit of a crowd out there that, uh, we, uh, take and let all your other, uh, taxing bodies know that, uh, you know, they need to follow that example, uh, because that's the only way we're gonna control property taxes. Uh, you know, the city, uh, granted, uh, has a, a little bit more economy than some of our taxing bodies because of the sales tax and such that we get in, but, uh, there's still so many more things that we have to provide versus some of the other taxing bodies. And, uh, needless to say, if, if everybody works together in this county, we can get the taxes down.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Alderman Schaefer?
We talked about it last time too, when we brought this up. It's sad to see that, uh, since we had our discussion of keeping the levy flat, there's, what I've seen already in the papers, uh, that's not the case with our other taxing bodies. So it's, it's a sad thing, but, um, again, like Alderman Glad said, I think, uh, this council and the staff, uh, uh, should be happy that they're doing their part to keep the property taxes where they're at. That's all I had.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Open up for discussion by the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this item? See none? This time looking for a motion to approve six A as presented. Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Second? Alderman Miller?
I'll second.
Discussion? See none? Clerk, please call it over.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six A. Uh, it's a motion to approve resolution estimating the property tax levy request for two thousand nineteen, collected in two thousand twenty at four million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Director Lynch, do you, uh, go ahead and present this item?
Thank you. City council is being asked to establish the two thousand nineteen property tax levy amount, which remain flat from two thousand eighteen would be four million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Council is also being asked to establish Monday, December sixteenth at seven P.M. as the date and time to conduct the property tax levy public hearing and consideration of the two thousand nineteen property tax levy ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions, comments regarding this item?
Real quick, Carolyn, you, that's enough time for you to get it completed by the end of the year, then? Your deadline of the...
Right.
You've got, okay. That's, I just wanna make sure that.
Alderman?
I just wanna say that, um, I think most everybody up at this, uh, table, uh, should know that number by heart now because, uh, it's been repeated. How many years in a row?
Um, this'll be the eighth.
Eighth? And, uh, I think we commend, uh, this council as well as the past councils, in that we've, uh, tried to stay as, uh, flat as we can, uh, with this levy and that, uh, again, uh, Senator, we've got a little bit of a crowd out there that, uh, we, uh, take and let all your other, uh, taxing bodies know that, uh, you know, they need to follow that example, uh, because that's the only way we're gonna control property taxes. Uh, you know, the city, uh, granted, uh, has a, a little bit more economy than some of our taxing bodies because of the sales tax and such that we get in, but, uh, there's still so many more things that we have to provide versus some of the other taxing bodies. And, uh, needless to say, if, if everybody works together in this county, we can get the taxes down.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Alderman Schaefer?
We talked about it last time too, when we brought this up. It's sad to see that, uh, since we had our discussion of keeping the levy flat, there's, what I've seen already in the papers, uh, that's not the case with our other taxing bodies. So it's, it's a sad thing, but, um, again, like Alderman Glad said, I think, uh, this council and the staff, uh, uh, should be happy that they're doing their part to keep the property taxes where they're at. That's all I had.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Open up for discussion by the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this item? See none? This time looking for a motion to approve six A as presented. Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Second? Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Discussion? Clerk, please call it over.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is discussion item, seven A, is presentation of a fiscal year eighteen, nineteen audit. Director Lynch?
Thank you. Um, we just received, recently received our audit from Eater and Sub and Company, and, um, Rachel Laffrance, who is our lead auditor, is here to present the findings of the audit.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I'll try to keep this brief so you can get on to more exciting items. Um, so if you have the audit report in front of you, um, page one of the report is our opinion letter, and the purpose of an audit is to express an opinion on whether the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. And so we issued an unqualified opinion, which means we found nothing to cause us to modify our, our opinion or to, um, disclaim an opinion, and we don't believe that the financial statements are materially misstated at all. Um, I'd also like to note that there was no management letter issued. Uh, a management letter is issued when we find something that we think the council and management should know of, like fraud or an internal control weakness, and nothing like that was found, so everything looked good. Uh, the basic financial statements start on page twelve of the report, and the government-wide statement of net position is basically an all-encompassing balance sheet, which, with columns for governmental and business-type activities. Uh, the statement includes all assets and liabilities of the government, including your non-current items such as capital assets, uh, long-term debt, pension liabilities, and things like that. So you'll see that the total net position or the equity of the city, uh, at April thirtieth was one hundred and twelve million. Uh, the fund financial statements start on page fourteen. The ending fund balance of the general fund was nine point two million, and of that amount, seven point two is unassigned. The operating income for the year was one point nine million. And those statements are followed by a balance sheet and income statement for the police pension fund, which had a fund balance of twenty-seven point two million. The footnotes to the financial statements begin on page twenty-three. And this is where you can find more information about anything in the financial statements that you'd like more detail on. So fixed assets, pension, long-term debt, things like that. I do want to point out footnote number fourteen. This year, a new accounting standard was implemented. It was GASB statement number seventy-five. The statement basically requires you to get an actuarial valuation on your other post-employment benefits. So items like retiree insurance. And then as a result of the implementation of that standard, your beginning net position was restated by negative five point six million in order to get beginning liability onto the books. After the footnotes, there's some supplementary information on pensions, other post-employment benefits, budget versus actual combining statements. And that's about it. So are there any questions?
Any questions by council? Thank you, Rachel.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say we really enjoyed working with the finance department. They were very easy to work with and it's been a pleasure. So thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Alright, next item on the agenda, you all weren't for the audit? No? Next item on the agenda is seven B, allowing non-highway vehicles on roadways in McHenry. Chief, can you go ahead and present this item before we start the discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. City staff has received numerous inquiries within the last couple of years from within the community about an ordinance that would allow non-highway vehicles to be operated within city-owned roadways. The state of Illinois gives municipalities the autonomy to allow these types of vehicles on their roadways if they deem appropriate. As other communities within the state, in McHenry County, including Johnsburg, Fox River Grove, and Huntley have all passed ordinances that have allowed use of these type of vehicles on their roadways, we wanted to present this topic to council for discussion here in McHenry. As staff or council got with the document, we gave you a little bit of an overview on what the state law actually says, along with some options if you choose to give us some guidance. But based on your responses tonight here, it'll give me an idea of what we need to bring back to you if you choose you want some action taken on the topic. And any questions specific to the law or anything, we're prepared to answer for you tonight.
Thank you, Chief. So I'm going to open up for discussion by the council first. Any questions, comments? Alderman Schaefer?
Chief, what was your, the three options that you have listed here for us, does it include any like specifics on the speed limit and things? So what is the speed limit regulations, I guess?
So in option three, it does talk about roadway speed limits and geographical boundaries. So if you were to follow what the state law allows you to do, it would default to thirty, roadways owned by the city that were rated at thirty-five miles per hour or less. But you could further restrict it from there. So some municipalities would say they're not interested unless it's a twenty-five mile an hour or less road, a city-owned road, not a thirty-five mile an hour. You can, at this point, you can restrict it to whatever road you want to identify specifically or whatever geographical area, and you can, you can avoid certain areas altogether regardless of speed limit. You can just make it by geography too if you wanted to, such as the downtown business district could be included off limits.
That was one of my specific questions, because if you were, I think people are going to want to be able to go to different places. So for example, if I'm in, I mean, any of our subdivisions, we're, we're kind of restricted based on the fact that Route 31 and Route 120 bisect our city both east and west, north and south, basically. So if I was in Legend Lakes and wanted to go to an event at Vets Park, I'm not going to be able to do that on my vehicle.
If you, if you didn't add restrictions above what the state law said and you made it legal, you could. But you would, you would have to get creative on the way. You can cross a state highway or a county road or a township road. You just cannot drive down it. So you can cross it, but you cannot drive down any, any three of those classifications of roads regardless of what council tries to decide wants to do. Those are the three roads that we cannot drive down.
Are those, and you can cross where? Anywhere?
Well, that would be up to, that would be up to council on whether or not, right now, if you were to go off, you can cross in any intersection. I wouldn't necessarily recommend that. I would recommend crossings at controlled intersections if that was going to be the case, if that's the direction council wanted to go.
And the other question I had is, who would be, I assume the vehicles are going to have to be registered? And is that an added expense that we would do or the police department would do? How's that going to work?
Yeah, traditionally, the police department would do an inspection, an annual inspection on the vehicle and issue a registration permit at a cost to the driver. And looking at the research from most of the other municipalities, that cost is not high. First, I'll give Johnsburg as our closest example. They charge fifty dollars for the first year for the permit, and then as long as you don't change the vehicle, if it's the same vehicle from year to year, the renewal is ten dollars. And part of the reasoning for that is they want to encourage people to have them inspected for the proper safety equipment and the proper usage of that vehicle rather than make the price so high that people just drive them anyways and they don't have them inspected. Because then that inadvertently affects the safety of the roadway that you sell on.
And an existing, say, golf cart from Boom Creek or McHenry Country Club is not, would not be passed inspection, correct?
No, well, you know, council would have to adopt a set of rules of what it is that they would want on it. So, but most of them have at very least, they have headlights, brake lights, turn signals. They have to have a steering wheel. They have to have brakes. They have to have a placard on the back, a triangle placard on the back, so just that in itself. And those headlights have to be visible from five hundred feet away, just like the taillights, just like a normal vehicle does. So to answer your question, is a traditional golf cart from a, from the country club, say, would not be legal on the roadway under this ordinance unless they had all those things on it as well.
And we haven't, would they be allowed to go on bike path?
No.
Would they be allowed to go in any like parking lots and things like that to get in and around places? Like for example, I'm going to, again, St. Pat's parking lot, because we're familiar with that. Can I cut through there from that subdivision into a roadway? Or is that, would be same laws would apply there?
As long as you weren't trespassing, you had the, you know, the authority to drive through that parking lot. And it was adjacent to a street that was legal and placked to drive the golf cart. That's kind of the beauty of this as far as if council goes this direction. They can, we can put an entire map together and designate the exact streets that we're going to allow us on. And then we would actually put it, it's like a little diamond placard that's marked on all those streets. If the street's not marked on the map, that's adopted by the ordinance, and it's not marked clearly, you can't drive.
That's all I had for now. Thank you. Alderman?
So you're saying basically, let's say somebody that lived in Whispering Oaks, if they wanted to, they could take Front Royal or Meadow and cross 120 there and continue on to do, to the shopping centers or whatever?
Cross on, cross where?
Meadow and 120.
That's the question. Where would they cross?
At the intersection.
Yeah, so Meadow and 20 would be an example. If you just adopted what the, what the state says that you can adopt without further restrictions, Meadow is twenty-five mile an hour, it's under thirty-five, it's a city-owned street, and you can, you can cross a state highway, so unless the council put restrictions. So again, to give you an example, Fox River Grove's map that's attached to their ordinance, they have Route 14 that runs through their town, and I believe they only have one or two spots where they allow golf carts to cross. And it is at a controlled intersection by a lane, because again, they're trying to regulate any risk associated with it.
When you talk about crossing, you're talking about not in the crosswalk itself, but actually on the street, correct?
Yeah, they're driven on the car with the, the rules of the road would apply to them, just as if they were a vehicle.
But I think to some extent, we probably should have, maybe at one council meeting or whatever, that we look at the entire map of the city and where we would allow and where we wouldn't allow crossings. And needless to say, with your expertise of being able to tell us where our biggest liability, well, not liability, but our biggest problem is as far as traffic accidents and everything else, needless to say, we want to have some good, safe crossings wherever they go. So basically, if somebody wanted to go to Jewel and Safe in Whispering Oaks, they could, they could basically go down Front Royal and actually, they couldn't.
They could not. There's no way to cross 120 from Front Royal.
Right.
If you were to have no restrictions at all, they could, they could go down Meadow and then take Meadow to home, and take home to the back of the Salvation Army and park and walk through from there, I guess. You know, they would have to get creative in that manner, because once they're on private property, then the enforcement is different. But again, we, you know, we have an ability here as, as the council does, if they want, whatever restrictions you want to put in place. And, you know, from the law enforcement, from police's standpoint, restrictions on the crossing of our major, of major roadways would be a recommendation that we would bring forward. What those locations are, we could work together with the work group or through another discussion night with council if they chose they wanted to take this and that, if that's the direction council wants to take it. And then we would, you know, we also would recommend that whatever action council takes, that they, they could, you know, they could say no, they could say yes, they could also say yes with some time, with a time limit where this ordinance would have to be renewed after X amount of time. So that way, council would have an opportunity with the police department to evaluate how it's working out. So if there were issues, council could choose not to renew this ordinance and therefore would not continue past a certain amount of time as well.
Well, you know, I was never a big proponent of the golf carts that were running around the, behind the golf course only because of the fact that what our laws stated and everything else. And we have a law that we create. And I could feel that not just the safety of those that are driving the golf carts and the UTVs, but the regular public that are driving on the, on the streets as well. Because needless to say, none of them would want to have an accident, really hurt somebody badly on one of these type of vehicles. And, you know, I've got to look at both angles. Let's say, you know, not just the safety of the people that are driving, but the people that could potentially accidentally hit somebody. So I want to be sure that we step slowly to make sure, and I don't mean it takes forever, but, you know, that we really analyze it, analyze it well, that we do the best safety possible. Worst thing that I've had in the past of motor vehicles on this, on the streets that always bothered me was a lot of ingenuity with putting motors on bicycles and running them through the subdivision. I've seen kids at night, no lights, no headlights, no taillights. And I'd be, actually had one or two where they were near misses because of that. And again, I'd feel bad if I had hit one of them, and I'm sure most people probably would too. And irregardless of whether they're in the right or wrong, it's still the idea that, you know, you don't want to have to accidentally hurt somebody or whatever, so. Like I said, I, I'm a proponent for it as long as we have something that, needless to say, I think definitely would not go with thirty-five miles per hour. Definitely want a limited minimum or maximum of twenty-five. Let's face it, we have twenty-five miles an hour on our, on our residential streets. You know, somewhere over the last thirty years, limit has become a minimum in our vocabulary. And it's a shame, but that's pretty much what's been happening. And I'd hate to see with these type of vehicles, the same thing happening again because of the safety concerns for both, you know, the drivers of the regular cars as well as the drivers of these. And, I don't know, I, again, I'd like to see some kind of a map that we're, where we're talking about the actual crossings. We don't need to have every single intersection on 31 that we have crossings for. You know, whatever makes sense, you know, and, and limit it so that most of our vehicles like this, if we pass this, will wind up using the same hats through the city, more or less. And make it so that it makes sense and that, well, unfortunately with Meadow, that would be a tough one. But you don't want people to have to travel halfway around a subdivision to get out, you know. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
So I love the idea. Thank you. Having just visited the villages of Florida, home of sixty-eight thousand golf carts, they have accommodated a whole culture of alternative vehicle lifestyle. With that, they have created two classes of golf cart, street legal and cart path only, which identifies where you can drive and not drive. And I think you're indicating with looking at regulating, registering, looking at that we're doing almost the same thing of where it can go and where it can't go based on the equipment that's there, which is awesome, because I'm also worried about the safety. We don't have cart paths. We're putting them on streets. Streets become problematic for pedestrian versus vehicles, so I want to know that these things are safe on the streets. I own ATVs and UTVs, and although they're all new, none of them have turn signals, because that was optional equipment. I didn't need it. I didn't order it. So I love the idea, but I think in agreement with Alderman Gleb, we need to identify where they can be, because we know people are going to want to take them downtown. They're going to want to take them to the bar, and they're going to want to run to their friend's house. I can see me bringing mine home. I live in Cooney Heights, and I want to go to Wayne's house. So how am I going to get from my house to his house? I'll figure it out. But that's not, right, that's not going to work legally. But that's how we all think. So I agree, we need to spend a little more time creating the path of how we're going to do that and how it's going to work out, because everybody's given an inch, we take a mile. And it needs to be safety first when we're going to do something creative.
Any others? Alderman?
Yeah, is there a minimum age?
You're required to have a driver's license to actually operate these?
So in other words, if you're sixteen, you'd be able to drive one?
The rules of the road would apply, correct.
So I wonder how many, how many more parking spots will, is there one fifty-six after playing these?
Actually, you fit two golf carts in one parking spot, so it solves all of our parking right there.
Totally agree.
And Florida is actually considering putting seatbelts on golf carts so that they don't have ejections, which is kind of an interesting.
So the village of Johnsburg. The village of Johnsburg requires everything but seatbelts. And just everything I told you, side rearview mirrors, taillights, brake lights, turn signals, everything but seatbelts. The village of Fox River Grove does require seatbelts. So, you know, this is the, the equipment package that council would want on these if they supported an ordinance. We can work, work together and figure that out.
Alderman Santee?
I'm comfortable with moving forward on this and being very safety oriented, maybe to the point of a little bit with all the items that the chief has brought up, being restrictive and having this a working document that we can, we can build on. You know, unless I can see a reason, a really, a really good reason for this, I'd like to see this at the twenty-five mile an hour streets. And with the information that the chief gave us tonight about these crossings in certain, for highways, definitely have to be some kind of designation there and probably keep it at, I don't want to say a minimum, but a smaller number in regards to, you know, where we can cross. And, and, and safety first and foremost about that. And then with like permits and things like that, is, is there an actual vehicle number that has to be attached to this?
Yeah, they get an actual like a registration. It can be, it'll most likely be a sticker. It's not cost effective for us to actually have plates made. But it would be a registration sticker that's.
And it's a number we would issue? Okay. And with that, you know, just adding to that, the vehicle number and doing the permits and doing the safety checks, you know, if there's any other ways of, you know, all these, I see some that are, you know, as high as, you know, cars and things like that, but not all, you know, maybe a way of identifying them. I don't know what's the best, but it could be, you know, it, it, it could be a flag. It could be something that has. It could be something that has to be attached to it also as a requirement, just to identify.
Have a large, like a tractor rectangle reflector mounted to the back.
Oh, mounted to the back, but it's not above the height of the cart though, right? It's, it's just at this level. Just because you might not see the top of a cart or someone driving a cart as quickly as you would see the top of a, of a regular vehicle, regular height as it's coming towards you or you're coming up on it going over a ridge per se. I'm just a little bit concerned there. And do we, to the Alderwoman Miller about Florida, yeah, it's fantastic. And then following up with Alderman Chaper, do we make this a seasonal license? I mean, do we want carts on the road with snow in the middle of December? I mean, do we, do we restrict the timeframe? I mean, I'm interested in putting that on as a, as a restriction. And, and, and what I said in my first line, it's a building of a document here. And I would like to start on a very, very safety oriented side, minimal speed limits. And if it can grow because we've proven as a city that it can, because we're following it and we're being safe, we're being safe with these vehicles, then I'm willing to look at some adjustments as a move, as a working document at some point in the future. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Any other? Alderman Chaper?
The, you mentioned that the numerous inquiry, inquiries about this and we've mainly been talking about golf carts, but we also have to clarify all the other vehicles that would be included in this. And we don't have to do that.
No, I, I can speak to that a little bit. I, I excluded two of them right off the bat in, in the document that I gave you. Off-highway vehicles, those are three-wheelers and four-wheelers. They're, they're a saddle seat and we're not asking for that. In fact, police department is against that. Off-highway motorcycles, dirt bikes, we're against that. We're not for that as well. We're only specifically talking about golf carts as they're defined by the, the owner statute. And we're recreational off-highway vehicles, which I gave you a definition in there. And that's basically limited by the actual size of sixty-four inches wide or smaller is the maximum size. So this is Polaris Rangers, things like that, side-by-sides that are just, you know, a little bit bigger version. The good part about the UTVs versus the golf carts, they're, they are built much more safety orientated. So they have a more robust bumper system, a roll cage. They come with seatbelts. They come basically with everything minus turn signals. So they actually require less outfit, upfitting than, than a golfer. The difference is they go faster. So they, but they would be held to that twenty-five mile an hour speed.
Oh, I'm still, sorry. The other, the question too about the, the areas, if we've had numerous inquiries, why not offer it or try it in those areas or subdivisions? If they want it, you know, kind of test it out there. But are they asking for, are they asking for their local area or are they asking to go all over the city?
I think, I think most people have reached out to us and just asking us to get it to the table and see what, what it looks like. But I'm going to revert back to the, as far as from the police department's standpoint, we, we would, we would recommend some type of a trial run that maybe that was restricted or limited. So we could take a look at it and be safe minded about it and then bring it back to expand it if we haven't had issues, if we see the value in it. Because, you know, in some communities, it's a neighborhood thing. It's designed for people to, to congregate with their neighbors within their neighborhood. It's not designed as a method for them to drive through McHenry to go to Home Depot. That's not what we're presenting and that's not what we support. We don't want them going to Jules to go shopping for their goods. That's not what the concept is for this. And we definitely don't want them on Green Street, Main Street or Riverside Drive. We're just asking for issues if we do that. So we're, we're really talking about neighborhoods and then about maybe adjoining the opportunity to go from one neighborhood to, to another, like Alderman, Alderwoman Miller had brought up, you know, going from.
Right. I don't think the, that's been communicated yet to the community because I think they're seeing it all over. As a, as at least the people that communicate with me.
Sure.
The other thing too, you know, we asked before for things and the police department's always gone that, well, we don't have the staff. We can't do this because there's going to take too much time. We already have, you know, limitations on that too. So I would definitely, you know, want to hear, you know, you give us stats on how many accidents there are just in vehicles and the fact that we have quite a few roadways that have numerous traffic issues, not just the main roads, but side roads. I think of Orlean Street, my area for sure, kind of things. But, you know, that's, that's why I think, you know, without knowing where and mapping this whole thing out, I, I'd like to get some of, you know, suggested map from you and staff and, and first before we start going. And maybe we can take a look at our own ward, so to speak, and, and make a list of places that we think would be, you know, not a good spot or a good spot to, to do it as well, so.
And we would suggest that, I think that's something that, I think let staff kind of, you know, the chief and the staff, come up with some roadways that they think is good or bad and then bring it to the council, each council member. Because they know their ward, you know, so maybe that's something that we can certainly do. Alderman Glab?
Yeah, you know, Alderman Sandy has brought up seasonal and just first thing that came to my mind was this for the snow as far as we're not looking at having any snowmobiles, correct? Okay. Not if we know it.
You can't, you can't do the snowmobile one anyways. It doesn't apply. It's all real vehicles.
Alderman Glab?
Any guess how many of these vehicles are owned by residents?
That's a really good question. No, but I, you know, they're growing in popularity. So when you, when you drive to the neighborhoods and people have grassroots, oh, you see golf carts and you see side-by-sides. And, and quite frankly, people use them now. They still are using them responsibly, but we see them out in neighborhoods occasionally here and there. We definitely see them by the golf course. That's probably where the, the one area where we do get complaints probably the most. Because again, they're not, and A, they're not driving carts that have gone through this inspection process or have these equipments. They're cutting from one part of the golf carts down the countrywide stage road to get back to the clubhouse. So those are where we get most of our, pretty much all of our complaints when it comes to these type of vehicles. But I, I would add that Johnsburg has over a hundred and fifty licenses issued. Fox River Grove has twenty. And the village of Huntley does not permit them, so they don't have a number to type because it's only allowed in the retirement neighborhood there.
Spring Grove just recently did a citizen survey about this. Did they follow up with anything?
I'm unaware of that.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah. I noticed Huntley was mentioned as far as one of the communities that have the golf carts. Is that just Sun City or is that entire city?
It's Delaware only.
Because I know the golf carts have been there since the inception of Sun.
There's been some conversation that they would like to build upon that to cross over Route Forty-seven, but I'm not sure. There was, there was no action taken the last time I checked.
I know the signs won't even allow them in the commercial area over there along Forty-seven.
That's the other side of Route Forty-seven.
Right. No, no, I mean on the, on the west side of Forty-seven. They're not even allowed, those signs don't start until.
That's because they're outside the neighborhood.
Right. And we're also talking major roads such as, besides the state routes, we're, we're talking Crystal Lake Road, Lillian and Green Street, those would be roads that we probably wouldn't be looking at, Bull Valley Road, any of those, right?
Well, you know, and I guess if council's in overall support, I've taken some notes here in everybody's talk so far. I, I think, I guess my response would be to come back if, if you're interested in an ordinance as a whole, that we would, you know, we expect us to maybe go through a couple of different drafts and brought back to you either one-on-one and then back as a discussion item, maybe at numerous council meetings to iron this out to where you guys are comfortable with. But we would provide you with an ordinance that has all that equipment that you talked about, up to and including seatbelts as a starting point, a twenty-five mile an hour restriction. Our opinion of the first start off of locations for limited crossings over our state roads and any other of our major roads where the speed limit exceeds twenty-five miles an hour. An ordinance that prohibits it from downtown use. I, I don't, I don't have clarity on the trial run part, but I, again, from the police department perspective, we're, we're in favor of an ordinance that takes effects and maybe expires thirteen months from the date that it goes in. That allows us a full twelve months to take a look at it and then a month to come back to you to see if whether or not you want to renew it or you want to pull it off the books. And then limited timeframe, we would provide you with our insight on potentially a limited timeframe out of the year of April first to November first or something like that.
Now, the vehicle would have to be inspected once a year. How do you feel that, or how do you, are you thinking that that's going to get set up as, are they going to have to come down to City Hall?
You know what? So realistically, if City Hall wasn't, if they could drive them here, if that's, where that mapping ended up where they could drive down Green Street to get them here, that's fine. But typically we would just make a call for service and we would certify certain officers to go to their house and inspect them and provide the information.
Pretty much what Johnsburg does.
Yeah, okay.
Just food for thought on that statement, I'd hope that you go out to certain, I know it will work for carts, for certain shopping centers to do the, the infant chair, uh, seating.
Baby seats.
Baby seats, yeah. You know, if, if there's a possibility of, or hopefully it'll take a little bit less time, less of the police department's time, but there's a set day that you want it inspected, we're in this neighborhood, we're in this parking lot. We got the approval to work in that parking lot and run it that way maybe.
If the demand was high enough, we could definitely work out something like that for sure.
Or maybe we can do it by ward at a certain location.
The, probably the most important part about, there's three components to this inspection and permit processes. Making sure that the vehicle's safe and has all the equipment that council wants on it. Making sure that the vehicle's insured, that is a requirement. So they have to show proof of insurance for that year in order to get the permit. And then they also have to sign a waiver of li, a liability waiver releasing the city of McHenry and all its elected officials from any liability. Should they do something and get involved in an accident or something like that, they cannot come back and hold the city liable for that decision. And this is very similar language that we've seen in the other municipalities that allow that they have, or they actually have to sign off on.
Alderman, do you have to have a single liability on each vehicle like you do an automobile or can you?
You know, it just depends, I think, on the insurance company. I know some insurance companies, depending on what the actual machine is to a golf cart versus a, a UTV. If it's a UTV, it's a separate insurance policy these days, ninety-nine percent of, of companies, just like a snowmobile. If it's a golf cart, sometimes it can be added to the homeowners insurance still for liability coverage. Whatever the, you know, we would hold them accountable for the state minimum, just like we would on a car.
The other thing too is if you, I know I'm looking at the research, there's a lot of, especially in our area here up north or in Wisconsin and other areas like that, there's a lot of rural communities that allow this type of stuff. I would just be interested to know any, you know, facts or things on that in communities our size, if you can find anything. I know down, there's a lot of stuff from Florida and the Sun, Sunbelt states.
Most, most of the areas where you're going to. Most of the areas you're going to see it, like in Wisconsin or rural areas, you're not going to find a community the size of McHenry because there's no counts that size. They're all fifteen hundred or less. The county population is thirty thousand.
Right. Because again, people that have them are like, well, we do it up north. And I'm like, yeah, I don't think it's the same amount of traffic and people and things like that. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions by council? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open it for public to give some public input, questions, comments. Michael Lewis?
I'm good for now.
You're good? Thomas Soroka?
Nothing for now.
Okay. Lisa Schwartz?
Nothing for now.
Thank you. Rachel? Vern?
Burofato.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for public access.
Rachel Burofato, seventeen thirteen Meadow Lane. And that's really my only concern. I'm actually a big proponent for the golf cart. They're fun to just, you know, tool around. Have the time. You're not going to go real far. You're not going to go real fast. I'm not worried about going to Jules, pick up my groceries or anything like that. I do have a concern, don't boo me, about the UTVs because I live on Meadow. I already have people, the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, but people go fifty. And I, we don't allow snowmobiles? Yeah, right. Okay. I have snowmobiles all winter. And so it would really be my concern with UTVs driving up and down the road. It's just that much more traffic. Meadow is an extremely heavily, heavily trafficked road. Already with cars. To have UTVs also coming up and down with the noise level, that's my only thing. I love ATVs. I, I love four-wheelers. I love driving on them. But I, the UTVs are loud. And again, you're driving up and down on my residential street and dealing with snowmobiles in the winter. That would be my only concern. I'm not understanding why people, again, I get the golf cart, just tool around, run down the street, run around the corner, Halloweening and stuff like that. But I don't understand the concept of why you want to take the UTVs on the road. It's not like there's somewhere you can go to go get, get to a trail around here, unfortunately. I think we had trails around here. So I'm not sure where they're taking the UTV and what purpose it's for. That would be my biggest concern.
Thank you, Rachel. Burofato, sir, would you like to say something?
Sure.
Sam?
Sam. Sam Burofato, seventeen thirteen Meadow Lane. My concern would be in the wintertime. You said something like April first to November first? Would that be something that would stick, do you think?
If it's, if it's written in the ordinance, we would enforce it.
Yeah. That would be my concern because in the winter, it's already difficult to drive on some of these streets because of the cars, that way they, they, the way they drive. I wouldn't want a UTV coming down the street and to have an accident with a truck or a plow. So that would be my biggest concern.
Sure.
Having them on the street again, like my wife said. If you went from trailhead to trailhead, that would be fine, but maybe slow the speed limit down on them instead of twenty-five, make it fifteen or something, just to, so you can slow them down a little bit. Because they will be passing other vehicles on the street. Not everybody is a legal person, you know? Some of them will buy, violate the law. Some of them are just going to go screaming up and down the street. And, and there's no way to catch a license plate to report them. That would be my other concern.
Thanks, Sam. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to make a public comment?
Yeah.
One at a time. Go ahead.
Okay. I actually had my name.
You already spoke once, Judy. No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
I had two tuck-ins. I had two tuck-ins, Sam. You only asked. Okay. G D C Live, five six three five Chesapeake Drive. Having worked for now Northwestern Medicine and just retired for over thirty years, I was in a specialized neuro rehab program in Crystal Lake. It's off campus. I've treated many McHenry residents with severe brain injuries and mild brain injuries. So you're going to get a professional viewpoint on this. I also have two severe brain injured family members, one at age fifteen, one at age sixty. Not on these kind of vehicles. They were both cars. But I would, first of all, they're, they're not very safe vehicles. And if you're going to do this, yes, definitely a personal restraint system. I would even go further to add helmet. You don't know how many people by motorcycles came through our program without helmets. And the people who had helmets at least had a living chance. And we'll tell you a severe brain injury changes your personality. You are not the same person. So please consider safety above everything. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next, sir?
Mike Loverdine. I, I live over on Valley Road. We do a lot of side-by-side. We do run ours a little bit around other neighborhoods. Some of my neighbors are here. And, you know, I, I agree with this guy, the side-by-sides, in my opinion, I think are safer than golf carts. If you do, not safer than golf carts, excuse me. Yeah, they are. I guess they are safer than golf carts. But what I want to get to is the seatbelt deal. Side-by-sides got seatbelts. The golf carts don't, so I would leave it that way. I don't think you should make all the people with golf carts put seatbelts in there. They don't come in them. They're really not that fast. They're, they're a lot slower vehicle. Side-by-sides, they do got seatbelts in there. The bottom line is if you got a seatbelt, you got to wear it. That's, that's where I would go with that. And I agree with the insurance and all the other stuff. I do think that the lighting, headlights, taillights, brake lights are a lot brighter on a side-by-side over a golf cart. So that's pretty much it, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Come on up.
Bill Wagner, I live in the shores. I have a golf cart in a side-by-side. My golf cart does 21 miles an hour and I messed with it. Typical golf carts do like 12. You guys are going to limit them to 25 miles an hour on a, on a, on a street. Typical golf carts won't go that fast, they have to be modified to do that, that's just how it is. A side-by-side's got a roll bar, it's got headlights, taillights, brake lights. It's four-wheel disc brake where a golf cart's a single brake on one wheel. We ride these things up in Michigan, we ride in Wisconsin, and the entire town is open to us. We're not allowed on state highways, I get it. Our, our trails, for the most part, are obviously off-road. But when you're going from like what she was saying, trailhead to trailhead, it's 45, 50 miles an hour. You're on pavement, granted, we don't have DOT tires, I'm assuming that's probably something you guys require just so they're, they're probably safer on the streets. When, when you get them into traffic, if you're going to limit these things to 25 miles an hour on the street, all you're going to do is create more traffic. If you're going to limit something, limit the golf carts. Bring, if you're going to, if you're going to have a, a street that's 35 miles an hour and you have a machine that is capable of doing said 35 miles an hour, keep the flow of traffic. We don't want to be in anybody's way to create problems. And other than that, if, if you look, if you look at a side, there's actually one in the parking lot, a buddy of mine brought it. If anybody has any conception or wants to see what it looks like, it's right outside. He's got a four-seater, full doors, seatbelts, headlights, the whole nine yards. Granted, we've got extra lights on them because we've got to see in the, you know, in the woods, random deer. But if you want to see what they are, people are saying they're unsafe. Everything's unsafe, improperly used. The car's going to kill somebody if somebody doesn't know what they're doing. It's the same thing no matter where you go. So we all have to be adults, if we all have licenses and we all have insurance, let us have a little bit of something up here to take away downtown McHenry. We go to the cruise nights, there's half of the guys in this, in his room have hot rods and granted, they're probably not all street legal, guilty, but you're, you're, you're going to take, you're going to take all the fun out. You're, you're trying to, if you're trying to do this to bring a community together, it's a way for you guys to get revenue as far as stickering these things or whatever you want. It'll help small businesses around town and it'll, it'll give us something to come together above. It'll be like a club more than anything. You already have a cruise night downtown, look what happens on every other Monday now. You pack all the businesses, everybody benefits from it. There's really, I understand the safety side of it, but you have to look at the big picture. Everybody's going to come together over something better than arguing. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Next person? Anyone? All right. Does council have any other questions, comments? Alderman, glad?
Yeah.
Okay, we're talking about licensing these vehicles. Now, that's going to be whether you're a resident or not, correct?
Well, it could be whatever council wants. Typically, the other municipalities, and I'll use Johnsburg as they're our closest neighbor, you do not need to be a resident in Johnsburg to get this license, you do need to bring your vehicle to them. You need to pay the $50 for the first time it had inspected. But then you can use it on their streets that they have designated. How you get it there, you trailer it to a friend's house or whatever, you can use it. I'm a designated street.
To some extent, I almost feel like maybe we should be looking at just city residents to start the first year, just to see how this thing works out. Maybe if you're like in the pockets of the city, you know, surrounding some areas, I can see those areas being allowed. You don't want all of a sudden, cavalcade of vehicles coming in that we're not used to, you know what I mean? I don't know, again, I don't know what the rest of the council feels on that, I just don't particularly want to be inundated right off the bat. And, you know, very plain that there are a lot of people that, that are for this, that want to see, to be able to be out on the streets with them. I know I've got a neighbor around the corner from me that complained for the last year that he bought one and he can't use it on the city streets. Think he's had it once or twice out there on a sneak, but he's the one that asked me if he could get to McDonald's and I said, no, he can't use the trails. So. But while we have all those people out there that are very interested in this, all I want to say is, is, and that doesn't mean you go out and strong-arm everybody, but you know, sometimes a little bit of comments to your neighbors that you know use these vehicles and maybe aren't using them within the law. Like the one gentleman said, let's make it work and let's all kind of work together on this. And I've always found that on things like this, that the people that are involved, to some extent policing, and I, again, I don't mean you stop them or anything else, but sometimes give a little bit of comments or whatever to somebody in a pleasant way, just kind of get them maybe into the realm where they're going to fit in with everybody else so that this does work well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alderman, glad?
My only other comment was, when we're looking at creating paths for available roadways, that we need to look at our park system. And if this does catch on and becomes a culture of its own, which I believe it will, that we give access to the parks and access to getting to the parks. So like Jim said, you know, everybody's going to cruise night on their golf cart or their modified golf cart. Because mine might be, that I also have access to getting to the park for the after-party. So I don't want to be cut off and have to be illegal. So when we're looking at that map, let's be realistic about the use so that we're creating pathways.
Amazing. Any other questions, comments? Alderman, glad?
I could support it, I just, I would like to see one here in trial period and see how it goes. Concerned about safety and just, you know, I'll see how it goes, I think if we get done.
Thank you.
Oh, I only have one other comment.
Alderman, glad?
Go ahead.
So I think, in all sincerity, if we get to an agreement on this, I think we're probably going to have to consider buying the police department a vehicle. Because unfortunate, no, in sincerity, unfortunately, if this becomes an issue, the police department's not going to be able to enforce this without a vehicle. And a squad car can't go where these go. So just thinking out loud, they may.
We have a couple ATVs now that.
But an ATV's not hard.
We don't, we don't need permission to ride our ATVs. We have the lights and the sirens on.
Maybe though this is off-road, this is only going to be able to go where there are police cars.
I think.
Two plans going off-roading, guys.
I'm just thinking outside of the bounds.
Before we talk about Jason, please.
I would, I would say this, is that whatever we present to you, if I'm understanding right, we'll put together, we'll call it draft one, to bring back to you sometime after the first of the year. You guys, we can go through it section for section, we can take notes and we can revise it after that again until we get a product that you're comfortable with us presenting to you on a vote. We don't expect the next, the next one to be that copy. But I would say, there will be a revocation clause built into there. So if somebody does violate certain aspects of the ordinance, that's an automatic revocation of that permit. So then if they're out on the road after that, they take the chance. If they get caught, we have a $500 impound fee and we take the vehicle. You know, that's just like we do any vehicle on the roadway, so. And I, I think everybody in this room is probably, they're here because they want an opportunity and I think they're going to be responsible. There's always a percentage of people that do things regardless of what the law says. And I, and I think I, it was noted in there, the two times we've had these issues, those would have happened regardless of whether or not this council passed an ordinance, in fact, they did. And, and the fact that they may happen again won't necessarily be tied to this ordinance. This ordinance is tied to making sure if we allow it, we put safe vehicles on the roadway and we reduce our risk the best that we can, which is why we put the lights and the brake lights and the headlights and the seatbelts and the turn signals and everything else on them. So we make them visible, we make them safe for operation. And I would add, the gentleman did speak about his golf cart going 21. The minimum speed is 20. So when you look at all these other ordinances, you can't put a golf cart on the roadway that goes 12 miles an hour. You have to make modifications to it. So you have, it has to go 20 so it doesn't impede traffic at 25 mile an hour or so.
So I've never been in a golf cart with a speedometer, do they come normal speedometers?
No.
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 Okay, so I have no idea how fast.
An amp or an amp.
So you bring it, bring it to an apartment here and we'll shoot a rate on that.
No. No. Thank you.
Any other questions by council? All right, chief, anything else to add?
We have our marching orders, we'll bring you back with a copy that you guys can review and make modifications as required.
Awesome. I want to thank all of you for coming tonight and hope you got a good outcome out of this so far, so thank you all for coming. You're more than welcome to leave if you'd like, we're going to finish up the meeting here, but I'll hold it against you. Maybe some, some of you. All right, next item on the agenda is staff reports, is there any staff reports?
The only thing that I have is the fact that the Christmas walk is this weekend. So you'll have the Christmas walk, parade starts at, Toys R' Tots parade starts at noon. And then you'll have the downtown Christmas walk and the tree lighting, which is at, we'll gather five and usually light it around 5:30, I bet the party.
Thank you. Any other staff reports?
Just, we'll get something out of the council in the next couple of days. The McHenry County Council of Governments holiday party will be coming back to McHenry this year. I went to Woodstock last year, Bull Valley.
Still a bag.
I wanted to come back to McHenry this year, so it'll be Wednesday, December 11th. It's always that, that similar Wednesday every year at the country club, so I'll get information out to council on that. And then, just so you can write, write it in your calendar, the 13th, that Friday will be the employee breakfast and lunch that we do, too, so we'll get something out and get information.
What's the date on that Friday?
13th.
So we'll, we'll get something out to you in the next couple of days, thank you.
Anything else from staff? I had no.
Quite a few areas in town, East Wood Manor is one of them, Orchard Beach is another. They're not in our city limits. But I know I've talked to, I have this area right behind St. Pat's where there are people already with those types of vehicles. How, how is that going to apply? Because that's all county, right?
We don't, we don't enforce the roadways out of county, so that, I think that's really why we would see, you know, what county does, I can't speak for them, but if you allow, I think that kind of hits on what Alderman glad would say, maybe those unique pockets within, in and around the city to get, get a registration, as long as they abide, you know, abide by the law. We would permit them and as soon as they hit the city limits, they're, they're in compliance, so.
Okay.
Once they get out of the city limits, that would be an issue for the sheriff.
And this kind of started out as golf carts, but it's exploded into much more than that, I think.
Alderman, glad?
Yeah, you know, we brought up earlier, I guess somebody did, and I just tend to wonder, I think about every year, you know, we approve the snowball contracts for some of the some subdivisions in, in the county or in the township, or township, I guess, not the city. Wonder if we couldn't look at, depending on the situation, is, as far as this naturally, the safety for them as well as for us, whether we could contract for some of those private roads as well.
We have some interest in exploring that, yes. So we've looked at.
Just thinking, is it a possibility as far as a solution for those type of things?
Absolutely, we're not ready for that yet, but we start.
Might save that money in the long run, it might also help as far as the residents, as far as the fact that they are getting some kind of services out of the city over and above what they, their police and all that, and can build. So, just food for thought.
Any other comments by council? Is he unlooking for a motion to adjourn? Alderman Sandy. Second? Alderman Devine?
Don't want to leave.
Clerk, please call it off.
Alderman Sandy?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Grub?
Yes.
Thank you, council, have a good evening.